Okay, because we're already almost five minutes late. First, I would like to recognize Chairman Moon.
Thank you, Mr. Becherlin. Just a couple of brief notes. That first of all, we are That was a Channel 4. Good. We are starting to take a collection from this morning. We have a budget gap to fill. So I'll put out a bucket right out there so that anyone who wants to be generous this morning, I will take collections. But much more importantly, for the first work session topic, I just want to note that, just to remind you, freshen the memory of the board members that the board passed a resolution almost two years ago, actually more than two years ago. We've come a long way. That's a Fairfax way to do it because we tried this several times before and hadn't been successful. And we want to do this right, and we'll do this right. We set as a goal, board set as a goal, to start the high school start time after 8:00 a.m. And let's focus on that. We're not debating whether to do it or not. That's a goal we set, and we're going to do it. And let's focus on how to get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. And before we start our official proceedings, it is important for me to announce that today is actually Administrative Professionals Day, and this is Support Employee Recognition Week. I know that we will all be recognizing our wonderful clerks and school board office staff later this week, but we do recognize everyone in the audience from our system and from elsewhere that's a support employee. So thank you for being with us today and throughout the year. As Mr. Moon mentioned, this has been a process that has taken perhaps more than two decades. But we did commit in April 2012 to look for solutions to starting our high schools after 8:00 a.m. And we all know that change is not easy, as we will see today, I am sure. But we do need to come to a decision on how we're going to move forward with bringing things out to the community. So that is the goal of today. We do have our friends from Children's National Medical Center with us, and they will be offering their presentation, after which, in terms of questions, I will lay out the process for that. So if you could each introduce yourselves and then go about the presentation. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Judy Owens. I'm the Director of Sleep Medicine at Children's National Medical Center, and I was glad to hear the word "friends" being used in reference to our team.
I'm Dr. Danny Lewin, Associate Director of Sleep Medicine at Children's National Medical Center.
I'm Darrell Robinich, Partner at Midamar Group, and I'm a consultant to the CNMC team.
And I'm Ally Baylor, and I'm the Research Assistant at Children's.
And of course, I'm Jeff Plattenberg. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Facilities and Transportation for the school system, Fairfax County Public Schools. We're really excited to have the opportunity to come back to you and the CNMC team. This has been an evolution and will continue to be, as it has consumed a lot of interest, a lot of time, and a lot of energies from a number of different stakeholders. We have begun, our staff, I'd like to recognize them for the tireless work that they've done in running numerous scenarios and fine tuning those scenarios, working with groups interested in the later school start times, but also groups that would be impacted by it. The Athletic Council, the Neighborhood and Community Services, the number of different organizations within the county and also of our constituency base that are impacted and affected, and the work that they've done. Working together with the CNMC team, I think that we've come to a point where we're looking forward to the next steps in the evolution. And with that, I'll kick it off to Dr. Judy Owens.
Good morning, everyone. We're very pleased to have this opportunity to provide you on the school board with a status report on the many activities we have undertaken over the course of this project and since our last status report in January of this year. We're particularly pleased to be able to present to you several bell-scheduled scenarios that our team is recommending be taken out to the community during a subsequent public engagement phase. While our recommendations are based on extensive research, discussion, and deliberation involving many, many stakeholders, we want to emphasize that it is indeed ultimately the school board's decision as to which of the specific scenarios will be presented to the public. As you know, our team represents a multidisciplinary approach. None of our work over the past year, however, would have been possible without the ongoing support and countless hours put in by the staff of the Office of Transportation Services as well as other FCPS departments and community stakeholders that have helped us throughout this process and have actively participated in the group's stakeholder meetings. We would especially like to thank Dr. Garza and Jeff Plattenberg for their continued leadership and support of our team in our efforts to improve the health, safety, and academic opportunities for all students in the Fairfax County Public School System. We would also like to thank the active participation of board members, Pat Hines and Sandy Evans, throughout this process. As a quick review, here are some of the major activities that our team and members of the FCPS staff have engaged in over an extensive period of research, discovery, and engagement with key stakeholders. Today, we'll be focusing on a few of these components, including our recommendations regarding what appears to be the most feasible transportation scenarios. We'll also be discussing the feasibility of a phased-in approach for the 2014-15 school As part of our extensive research and discussions with key stakeholders, we have identified a number of issues that have the potential to bring additional cost reductions, increase transportation efficiencies, or lessen the impact of the change on other members of the community. We will briefly discuss some of these issues and look forward to exploring them further with the board and the district. Finally, we'll present you with a timeline for community engagement and board action that was developed in consultation with both members of the board and Dr. Garza. The CNMC team has reviewed and analyzed previous FCPS Task Force reports, surveys, and background materials, as well as media accounts and documents from other government and community organizations across the country. We used all of this documentation to begin to identify relevant factors in the school district and greater community to better understand challenges and opportunities that might impact the desired start time change. This included a web-based national survey of 88 identified school districts that have successfully changed their school start times in order to obtain basic information on methods used to change schedules and gain community support. We developed a database of about 100 schools and school districts that have both successfully changed start times and others that considered the change but did not follow through with implementation, a lessons learned document, if you will. It's overwhelmingly clear from that research that two very important factors in successfully changing start times are, number one, a supportive superintendent and school board who work collaboratively to study and promote later start times to the community; and, number two, a community engagement plan which focuses the discussion on the academic health and safety benefits of providing additional sleep opportunities to students. Last week, we submitted a report to FCPS summarizing the key findings of this research and providing information on the strategies and tactics used by school districts that have successfully changed their start times. We hope that this report will help inform FCPS and other school districts as well that are considering these changes and expect that this report will be delivered to the school board soon. To date, the CNMC team has met and/or spoken with more than 45 FCPS departments, Fairfax County Government Agencies, professional associations, and community organizations, several on multiple occasions. One of the most important key stakeholder groups that were mentioned by the board members, Dr. Garza, and others, were principals. Therefore, in addition to the principal survey that we conducted, we made a concerted effort to seek additional ways to educate and engage this group through presentations and web presentations. Other community engagement strategies implemented by our team included the development of a project website to provide a portal for community and stakeholder input, as well as basic educational content, and utilization of social media sites such as Facebook and Twitter to provide additional opportunities for the community to share comments and follow the project's progress. Additional educational materials are being developed as part of the proposed communications plan and will be a component of the final Blueprint for Change report. Since our last report in January, we have spent countless additional hours continuing to work with the Office of Transportation Services to further refine model scenarios and develop new ones. Altogether, we've developed more than 19 different scenarios that were reviewed during two recent group meetings of key stakeholders. Altogether, we held four key stakeholder group meetings to review and discuss scenarios and other pertinent issues. Throughout the meetings with individual organizations and these group stakeholders, we want to emphasize that the participants were, without exception, pleased to be engaged early in the process and expressed a willingness to work together in a spirit of partnership. In general, they shared the belief that change can be accomplished while at the same time expressing the need for flexibility in order to mitigate the potential impact on specific programs, and they emphasized the importance of allowing adequate time for the community engagement and planning. During these discussions, stakeholders also identified some longstanding practices in FCPS in which efficiencies could be found. For example, there is currently a 10-minute difference between the elementary and secondary length of day. Based on preliminary modeling, implementing a uniform length of day could potentially contribute about a 3% savings to any transportation model. There was substantial agreement among stakeholders that closing this gap and standardizing the length of day, as long as planning time for teachers can be maintained, could be achieved. Other issues or practices that make student transportation more complicated and costly and can impact the flexibility in changing start times in Fairfax were also discussed and recommended for additional consideration. These include elimination of half-day Mondays with rescheduling of teacher planning time, development of localized rather than centralized advanced academic programs, and enforcement of school placement policies. In addition, it was widely acknowledged that Fairfax County has a uniquely widespread degree of community access to school athletic facilities, and that in return, community athletic organizations have made a substantial investment in providing middle and elementary sports programs. There is also an historical agreement to build community pools for dual use that further complicates scheduling. Finally, school bus transportation of students to Thomas Jefferson places a significant financial and logistical burden on FCPS. In the process of developing and refining transportation scenarios with stakeholders, we incorporated the general principles of biological, cost, logistical, and community political considerations. While there are no perfect scenarios, those that we are recommending today reflect an attempt to best balance all of these considerations. Briefly, other general principles included were our charge to change high school start times to after 8:00 a.m., a comfort zone for middle school start times, and no civil twilight violations, although it should be noted that there actually are some civil twilight violations in the current schedule. Working with the Office of Transportation Services and with feedback from our stakeholder group meetings, we ran 19 different options or different iterations of some options. We will discuss in more detail those that we believe are the most feasible for ultimate implementation. Based on these scenarios and extensive stakeholder discussions, we established what we called "comfort zones," representing the delivery windows that the majority believed were generally acceptable to their constituencies and also to the community at large. Additionally, based on our discussion with all of the different stakeholder groups, the different departments within FCPS, and some of the board leadership, these are the basic assumptions that we have been working under and will work under moving forward: that high school start times will change, and a full implementation, full implementation, will take place in the 2015-16 academic year. Furthermore, we want to emphasize that the rationale for this change is based on the intent of the superintendent, the administration, and the school board to improve the health, safety, and academic performance of students in Fairfax County, and that this change can be accomplished in school districts such as Fairfax that are large and complex. When considering the model transportation scenarios that we're going to discuss, it's important to point out several things. First, all costs are rough estimates that in general air towards the high side. The task at hand is to select specific scenarios for additional public comment and community engagement. Cost estimates will be further refined once community-preferred approach is developed. Our recommendations represent what we believe is the best balance of the various considerations outlined. Several of the scenarios that we are presenting today may not work for various reasons, but we will briefly review them as well to illustrate our approach and the selection process. And the ultimate scenarios chosen by the school board and implemented might not be shown here and, in fact, might be a hybrid of one or more of these. So, getting to the heart of the matter, the first option is what we term the "middle school middle" option. Positives of this scenario include the provision of good sleep opportunities for all students, dismissal times that would still work well for athletic programs, and the middle school dismissal time in this plan would accommodate after-school programs. Challenges include an extended window for elementary start times, a relatively high cost, and that more bus drivers would be needed, which clearly poses logistical as well as financial challenges for the Office of Transportation Services. The second option is what we term the "middle school late" option. Positives of this plan include optimization of sleep opportunities for both high school and middle school students, delaying high school start times from its current 7:20 by 1 hour and 10 minutes. This would require fewer buses than some other plans, and most of the additional buses, 52, are due to Thomas Jefferson runs. And there would likely be fewer operational challenges in this plan compared to other plans. However, some of the challenges include the potential for a negative impact of late middle school dismissal time on after-school programs, and an elementary school window which would be earlier compared to the current morning bell time of 8:00 a.m., although this is only a 10-minute difference. The next set of options, both have middle schools starting earlier. The first option is what we call "middle school early," elementary school 15 minutes earlier option. Positives include a high school sleep time, which is optimized. The cost is relatively low, with 38 buses additionally needed. TJ students would ride in with middle school students, thus only six additional TJ buses would be needed. And the earliest elementary bell time is shifted 15 minutes earlier, but the latest bell time is also shifted earlier from the current 9:20, which may be seen as a positive by at least some elementary school parents. Some of the challenges, though, include this plan reduces middle school students' sleep opportunity to essentially being equivalent to the current high school. An individual elementary school start times would vary within the window to optimize delivery. The second option is what we call the "middle school high school flip" option. Some of its positives are improved sleep opportunity for most, although not all, high school students. TJ students could be shuttled in on the middle school buses, thus reducing the need for additional buses. And the elementary school bell schedule in this plan between 8:00 and 9:20 is pretty close to what the current window is. However, some of the challenges include reduction in middle school sleep opportunity, again, to be equivalent to what is currently experienced by high school students. A few high schools in this plan would start before 8:00, which could be viewed as a violation of our original charge, and rolling high school bell times could create issues for shuttles and for academy runs. We're also presenting two alternative options which essentially represent very close to no-cost options. Both are positive from the standpoint of biological considerations for both middle and high school students, and in regards to cost, but we believe probably not acceptable from a political and community logistical standpoint. The first option, we call the "40-minute slide," and is closest to a no-cost option. It provides good sleep opportunities for all students and would require only an additional three buses. However, the elementary delivery window is well outside what we have determined to be the comfort zone discussed earlier. The second option is what we term the "high school late" option. Its positives include, this is really the best sleep opportunity of all of the plans in terms of high school students. It also delays middle school start time. It requires fewer buses than many of the other plans, and the majority of elementary schools would start between 7:40 and 9:15. However, the challenges to this plan include high schools beginning at 9:15, which is well outside of what we have determined to be the comfort zone. After-school events, athletics, field use would be significantly impacted in this plan, and there may be daycare concerns or work concerns with high school students getting home significantly later in the afternoon. Finally, we're presenting a phased-in option as part of our charge from the school board. We considered, with OTS, four possible approaches and chose a combination of two of these as being likely to have the least cost attached and the least impact on current programs and surrounding elementary schools. However, I want to emphasize that this plan would only work with five specific pairs of middle and high schools. For a number of reasons, we are not recommending a phased-in approach. These include the fact that the five specifically designated school pairs may not have sufficient local administrative and community support for this early implementation, that this plan assumes that the phased-in scenario implemented would be a middle school high school flip. However, this may not be the scenario chosen for full implementation county-wide in 2015-16 academic year, which would potentially require those five chosen school pairs to change bell times again. In general, departments have already worked out scheduling for the next academic year in terms of academics, athletics, and extracurricular activities. Thus, this phased-in approach would have to be determined immediately, and this gives little time for those communities involved to adapt. Phased-in approach could put significant strain on staff and the community in the process of adapting, which could potentially negatively impact the success of achieving full implementation. And finally, our team was not able to find any similar-sized districts across the country who have successfully implemented start time change and included a phased-in approach. Based on our research, work with the Office of Transportation Services, and extensive discussions with key stakeholders, our recommendations for the board to consider are as follows: the middle school, middle elementary school open window, middle school late, middle school early, elementary school 15 minutes earlier, and the middle school high school flip options. Again, it should be emphasized that these scenarios should be viewed as conceptual models and can be further improved upon through the implementation of other potential policy changes, as well as minor adjustments to these individual delivery windows. So this last slide shows the basic tasks that need to be accomplished in the next six or so months in order to move forward towards implementation of healthy school start times in Fairfax County. We recognize that there is still considerable work that needs to be done, given the enormous complexity of the issues involved and the level of interconnectedness between FCPS programs and the community. But we are confident that our process of fact-finding and stakeholder engagement has been both prudent and productive in building trust and inviting active participation from the community. It's important to note that all stakeholders that we have met with recognize the importance of sleep to health, safety, productivity, and well-being of students. To a one, they have said that they do not oppose changing school start times and have pledged support and partnership in addressing the potential impacts on the community. Given all our research and discussion with stakeholders over the past 12 months, our team strongly believes that later bell changes for Fairfax County Public Schools can be achieved at a reasonable cost in the 2015-16 academic year. Thank you for your attention, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions that you have.
So first, I'm going to let Dr. Garza speak, then I'll talk about question and answers.
Thank you, Dr. Owens, and the entire team. You all have done, you know, I've watched, worked with you, but watched also from afar, and you all have put in yeoman's work on this issue. I know we had two board members that represented the board on the stakeholder group, and I believe both of these board members also have represented the interests of the board quite well, and their expertise has been very helpful. If you don't mind, I wanted to reiterate a couple of things that you mentioned because I thought they were very important. These are just models, over 19 different variations and probably, that probably could be more if we counted every single version that was looked at. We've looked at all of them that they've looked at, the stakeholder group. It's very complex, and we felt like it was very important to narrow the various options in order to really have an opportunity for the community to meaningfully engage. Otherwise, we get so caught up in the weeds. And so I think it was probably obvious that the team, I believe, and when I say the team, our friends here at the end of the table, I believe, did a good job of trying to narrow the options down to certain kind of thematic options. So there's one option that starts middle school late, another, I mean, so tried to focus on ones that were radically different in terms of concept so that we can get feedback from the community. But I think it's also, finally, very important to note that once we get feedback, meaningful feedback from the community, the model that will likely be recommended to the board later in the process may look very different than the models that we're talking about today. I think that's very, very important. Otherwise, it's already a foregone conclusion. I think that we all want to listen I think that we all want to listen to the community and get, but any one of these particular options, let's say it's a late middle school, could be, there could be a multitude of different options around just that approach. So I just think it's really important for us to be clear with the community that, you know, we're trying to gauge what the preference of the community would be, and then there would be other options that would be developed thereafter. Is that correct? Would you agree with that, Dr. Owens?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Garza. Now, I'm going to go into more detail than is usual, because this is a very delicate conversation, as we all know. We are going to address two questions in your responses and in your questioning. We are going to leave the community engagement piece out to the PEC work session later in the day, just because that might kind of cloud our decision-making right now. So the first thing we're going to focus on is which proposals to take out to the community. We have three to four in front of us, and the main question for you to consider is, are you okay with taking these four out as they are? Secondly, we need to discuss when the change should be implemented. We've heard a recommendation that there should not be a phase-in. We can continue to discuss that. Otherwise, the plan moving forward would be to implement in 2015, 2016 school year. I'm going to give each member of the board ten minutes. That includes the response time from our friends, and that's, I'm going to give each person a one-minute warning when that time approaches. And I'm going to be recording responses as to facilitate our decision-making going forward, because by the end of this, we need answers to both of those questions that I mentioned. Finally, Pam is going to be recording next steps, so if you have one, please be very clear in that. And if you do not answer these two questions, I'm going to hold you to them, and if you have no change, that's fine. So we're going to start going down our list, and please raise your hand if you're ready. We're going to start with Mr. Velkoff.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. I feel like this is déjà vu. Mrs. Strauss probably feels like it's Groundhog Day. And Ecclesiastes says, "There is nothing new under the sun." I have a couple of questions, and then I have a bunch of comments, and I'll try to answer those questions. So regarding the bus costs, are these one-time costs or are these recurring costs? Is this the cost of purchasing buses?
The majority of the costs that are included in there are for the purchase of the buses, but they also include salary for drivers, which are recurring.
Okay. So as a next step, I'm going to ask that we break out the one-time costs of purchasing and then the recurring costs, fully loaded, please. I have a couple of other questions. Have we made any hypothesis on what the predicted gain of sleep will be for students? I mean, do we predict forty-five minutes for the various, I realize it's going to vary by the scenarios, but is there any attempt to predict how many minutes of sleep students are going to achieve?
I think the literature on this is very clear in that students get an additional amount of sleep that is essentially commensurate with the difference from the original start time to the new start time.
Okay.
So bedtimes remain the same. If the start time changes by an hour, they get an additional hour of sleep.
So have we also made a hypothesis of the percentage of students who will realize that gain?
What I would say to that is that there are always going to be what we really believe a minority of students, and again, the scientific evidence bears that up in looking at schools that have made these changes, that the vast majority of students get additional sleep.
Okay. So if we have scientific evidence, then we should be able to make a scientific hypothesis, right? So we think there's going to be a distribution among the students of some that are going to get more sleep, some that are going to just take the extra time, and some that are already getting enough sleep. So I would just ask as a next step, as a matter of science, do you have a prediction of how many, what percentage of the students are actually going to see more sleep?
So based on, based on just the scientific principles that we follow with our estimates, you know, the middle sixty-seven percent of students who fall into the normal category of sleep need would benefit, which is a large, large percentage.
So you're saying that all sixty-seven percent are going to get an extra forty-five minutes or an hour and a half of sleep?
And let me add two points. One point is sleep timing. So sleep duration is absolutely critical, but adolescent biology requires that they have a sleep time where morning sleep is as important as evening sleep. And part of our plan is education, to help parents know how to help their children sleep adequately.
I understand, and since I'm on the clock, I want, excuse me if I'm interrupting you. I'm trying to make sure I fit within ten minutes here. I'm sorry? Good. Thank you. Actually, one thing I do want to commend all of you for, something that I think was missing five years ago, was an awareness of the effect that all of the technology is having on students getting to sleep. And I think, I think there's been increased awareness about the need for parents to know more about this and students to know more. So that's been a very positive development. This is a next step question, but for these scenarios, do we know what the earliest morning pickup times will be? And you don't have to do that off the cuff, but I would like to know that. Have we done any investigation of how boundary adjustments could affect the pickup times? That's a next step question. Okay, I think I've asked my questions for next steps, and so I'm going to offer comments. So first of all, regarding the simple one about whether to have any kind of a phased-in approach, I would say absolutely not. I think we saw, we had a, we had a bus schedule change at the elementary level where parents were reporting in that this is a big deal. And the reason it's a big deal is because you have to make childcare arrangements anywhere from nine months to a year in advance. And so if we're going to do anything that affects people's expectations about schedules, we can't do it in this fall. So I think I answered that one. I'm, I'm sure I'm in a minority, but it is not my understanding that we have decided that we're going to make a change. And I have the text of what we decided on April, April 2012, and we said this was a goal. So I think what's missing, when we take this out to the community, there needs to be a no-change option. I feel like we're being steered away from the two alternative concepts. And to me, these are the most reasonable of the two. In terms of the school board's literal goal, eight o'clock, shifting everything by, you know, forty-five minutes or whatever, addresses that. And it addresses it at no cost. And then the second one, the one that has high school starting at 9:15, in my view, that is the only one that is either scientifically honest or politically honest, because that's the one that actually moves high school times later. The other ones are, you know, are poking at the margins, all right? And that is going to come into conflict with all the issues that we heard five years ago. But I'm perfectly happy to take that out to the community, have this discussion one more time, and see if folks are willing to, are willing to deal with the consequences of that. But to me, I mean, I have to say, the four that are actually being suggested, one of those has a start time of 9:30 for the middle schools, and I think we got very clear indication from the principals that that's really not going to work for the middle schools. And that is consistent with what we heard five years ago, because there's effect on the after-school programs. And then the other thing is, the third and fourth options have middle school starting at 7:20. And I, I'm astonished that we're saying that 7:20 is too early for high school students, and then we're turning around and saying, well, it's okay for middle school students to have to get, get to school by 7:20. And my reaction to this, to my colleagues, is those three plans are throwing the middle schools under the bus, if you'll pardon my pun. Who generated, I forgot one other question. Who generated the schedule scenarios?
Well, I can say the schedules were generated through our teaming process. I mean, when we actually literally do the cords, the out-of-cords, that's a transportation function. But that's a subset of all the articulation, discussion, and dialogue of each of the stakeholder groups and our whole team.
So I'll have a follow-up conversation offline about that.
I think Dr. Garza did you.
Well, if I'm understanding your question correctly, who came up with various scenarios that were contemplated, the nineteen or whatever it was? I believe it was our consultants, obviously, along with our stakeholder group. Would you say that's a correct answer to that? We've had a large committee of stakeholders, principals, parent group, quite a number of affected groups that have sat on that committee, and I believe that that was the group that would be largely how some of them, the origin of some of those models.
You are correct. It did include teachers' representation from each elementary, middle, and high. It included the larger stakeholder group, included the teacher associations. It did include the neighborhood and community services. The athletic council representative was there. It was a broad cross-section.
Okay. Pardon me for, I want to finish up. So, Mr. McElveen, my advocacy here on the options is no change and alternative one, which is the shift of forty-five minutes, whatever. And then the other alternative is the one that has high school at 9:15, and I would not put out any of the four other ones. And then the last thing I want to, the last point I want to make here is regarding reasonable cost. And what's the definite, we have to say, what's the definition of reasonable cost? All right? Two million, three million dollars is a stretch as it is. And we've just been going through a budget exercise, and we know how much three million dollars is. Twelve million? Seriously? Seriously. We're going to have to be making seventeen million dollars of cuts here in the next month, and I hope we are not even contemplating adding twelve million dollars to the cost of running the school system for more buses. This is very well-intentioned. I do want to get bus pickups later than 5:45. That's inhumane. For me, if you could do it, if you could get bus pickups at 6:30, I think that's the best we can do.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. That's exactly ten minutes. You are very concise. He's a model for how we should conduct this. So thanks. Number two, Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. I will not repeat anything Mr. Velkoff has talked about. I will do my voting piece first. What scenario should go out to the public? I would recommend all the ones that you have suggested. If my colleagues want more, I'm fine with that. Community input at this phase, I think, is critical. We need to know what the community feels. So I would recommend, going forward, as you have recommended, the scenarios. That's fine. I want to know what the community thinks. As to a phased-in approach, I really appreciate your response to that, because that was a school board request. Can we do a phased-in report, response? And again, I so appreciate your expertise in this report, which, by the way, gives tremendous information, very helpful. I am very pleased with what you've come up with. And if you feel that we shouldn't do a phased-in approach, I have heartburn about that. Change is always hard, and asking the community to change twice, I think, will be too much for the community. My only outside questions with all of this, having done this many times before, which, again, I really appreciate your understanding of the devil in the detail that we have been up against every time we've tried to do this, because you have absolutely understood our frustration. So I'm very pleased with what, your acknowledgement of where we are. One is, whatever we do with middle school start time, I'm always concerned with the supervision of middle school students. However it is, whatever time school starts, for those young people, who at some days they are two years old and sometimes they're twenty-three years old, they need to be appropriately supervised in order to get to the bus stops and in order to get to school safely and actually arrive, knowing that the vast majority of our parents are all in the workforce by the time their kids are in middle school. So I am concerned not only with the after-school program, I am really concerned about the safety of those children getting to school and not somehow being left to get to school on their own because their start time is so late. As a parent who raised four middle school kids, and as I am responsible for the safety of all the children, I want to make sure that they remain safe and truly get to school and we don't find them on curbsides doing things they shouldn't be doing because they've not been sufficiently supervised. And this was part of what we ran into the last time with, with a really late middle school start time. With the high school start, however this ends up, I don't want to end up in a situation where your extracurricular activities, practices, whatever, they end up being at seven o'clock in the morning at high school. Because I've seen this in other school divisions, and even, even, you know, the reality of we don't want kids at school at seven o'clock or 7:20. The reality is, somebody schedules an extra tutoring session, an extra practice, an extra rehearsal, what have you, because it's too late in the afternoon. You kind of fall into that pattern. And two things would happen if we fall into that pattern. One, we can't, we will not be able to afford early buses. So we would X out a large portion of our high school community of students who would not, who no longer be able to participate in extracurricular activities, and it's important for the kids. So we would have another group of kids who would not be able to participate in extracurricular activities. Those kids would not experience extra sleep. They would be at school even earlier. So I don't want to have us fall into that practice, an unintended practice of having, okay, we're going to have an extra practice at 7:00 a.m., you better be here. Don't want to do that. And then we also don't want to fall into the situation where high school start times are so late that we have a large section of our kids missing the last block of class to board the bus to get to a game, a practice, or what have you, and then they're missing academic time. So you don't want to fall into that at either end, because I think that is, again, a reality of what we would fall into, even though it was kind of outside what our expectation as a board would be. So we are a very large school division, and we have to be careful that we don't end up with either of those. I think that it'll be interesting to see what the community is willing to do with those middle school start times. I want to listen to the community. The elementary schools, we, however we end up with that, again, we have to make sure the children are safe in walking to school, in, you know, bus pickup times. So those are sort of my outside parameters. I want to listen to the community at this point. I will be looking at to make sure that there is robust community engagement, so we really get a good feel for what people are willing to do. I am very pleased that we have additional research on the technology impact of adolescent sleep cycles. I think this is probably one of the very important parts of your research and of the broader research that's going on, plus the impact on adults who are screen timing with their flat-screen TVs in their bedrooms now, and they find they can't go to sleep. So, yeah, I really appreciate the research on that. Anything else I need to comment? I appreciate Mr. Velkoff's questions on budget, so that we understand the difference between ongoing and one-time. But again, I'm very pleased with the work that you've done so far. I think this is very helpful. Our community has said over and over they want a change, and I think we have to listen to that. And even if the change is not perfect, I think it behoves us to figure out if we can make something a little better. The other little piece and caveat is that we have to, and I really appreciate the fact that you said that about sixty-some percent of the kids probably will experience an improvement in sleep time cycles, et cetera. I think we also have to acknowledge that some kids, no matter what we do, are not going to do this. The other piece is that I suspect there is going to be some parts of the county because of our traffic patterns, which are so bad, that even if we move high school start times later, there may be some bus routes that are still going to be tough. I mean, I just, I think, I know that Mr. Plattenberg and our transportation people understand that. So we have to be careful what we promise and that people understand that. So again, I think that's all I have to say. I think I've answered my two questions. And again, thank you very much. I am just really pleased with the amount of information, the engagement, the quick turnaround with this, and I'm clearly waiting to see what the community has to say, because in the end, their input will be absolutely critical as to, as to how we move forward. And clearly, the budget issue, we can't afford a huge amount. I mean, we know that, so. But I think we can change reasonably, if we are careful, and follow the good advice that we've been given. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss, who was for a no-phase-in and all of the four suggested options. Next, we have Ms. Monwalklin.
First of all, I would like to say that what we're looking at here is the Goldilocks challenge. Is it too early? Is it too late? Can we find what's just right? Arlington has been a wonderful model of how this can be accomplished. They brought out multiple options. The community provided the feedback. The community provided the feedback. They then adjusted based on that community input and created a hybrid, a successful model. And I truly look forward to this school system doing what over 70 jurisdictions around the Commonwealth of Virginia already do, which is to have healthy start times for its students. I appreciate my colleague's concern about whether or not this was a goal versus a predetermined fact. I think that this board has spoken that we do recognize the science very well. We do understand what is at stake. And if we are committed to student achievement, honestly committed to student achievement, then yes, we will be mindful of the costs, but students cannot be successful in the classroom and learn if they're exhausted and tired, if they're stressed and depressed. We know that from the science. So, everything we do from great teachers and beyond will be compromised if we do not have healthy start times. So, I wanted to begin by saying that perhaps the greatest challenge will be leaving this discussion today with the public understanding, how committed are we as a board to understanding how critical healthy start times are to successful student learning in the classroom? And I, for one, am one of those board members that absolutely believe that without healthy start times, our students will not be the very best students they can be. And it's been far too long that Fairfax County hasn't been able to figure this out. To my specific questions that was asked by our moderators, I'm comfortable with the four options that have been recommended to us. I have caution about whether we go with the no-change model, because I think we have to ask ourselves as a board and as a system, what are we trying to accomplish with the community engagement? We know that from that human nature, change is difficult. We know that if we go out there and put, keep the status quo, that we, that's not going to help us figure out, if we're committed to change, what will the change look like? So, I think we benefit from saying, this is our best work from this enormous effort that Children's has put forth to already engage stakeholders, that this is our best judgment. Tell us what you like about these different options, as opposed to saying, I don't like any of them and keep what you have. I think that people who feel that way will absolutely have access to the board members and the superintendent to say that. But I think we need to focus and be strategic with our dialogue. In terms of the engagement process itself, I do.
We're going to talk about that in the.
That will be, thank you, because I think it's very important that it isn't just what we decide to bring out, but to really make sure that the process itself is successful. Because as a parent of middle and high school students, I went through that community engagement process in 2009, and I have concerns about how that was executed at that time, and I'd like to see us be more successful going forward. In terms of looking at solving the issue here, I appreciate the questions that my colleague, Mr. Velkoff, was asking. Scientifically, what do we know will be the gains? But I want to add some further context here. Again, as a parent of three teenage boys, we have other issues that are impacting the sleep of our children in Fairfax County. We are not honoring the guidelines we have in place about what are healthy homework loads. And that is something that we have a responsibility as a system and as a community to address. And I know that Dr. Garza is aware of the concern, and that is something that we're working on. But you can, you can begin the process of change to help our students be more successful in the classroom by having the healthy start times. This isn't just about how many hours more they'll gain per week. It is also about the fact that the circadian rhythm is not being honored of these adolescents. Their sleep cycle is such that they are not alert at these early morning starts. So, even if they still had six hours sleep, regardless of when it was, they're less alert at this time that we start them at 7:20. So, I think we need to really make sure we help the public understand, it's not just the gains that they will get in minutes, which we already know scientifically, every 30 minutes helps a child to be more successful in their learning process, but it's also going to be that they're going to be on a better time cycle for learning. And so, I'm, I'm a huge proponent of that. I also want to talk about the social media distractions. That is something, again, we'll have to continue the education process with our community, because we can have healthy start times, we can reduce our homework loads, but the social media distractions that our children are faced with is something that we, as a community, as parents, have to help them make better choices. Athletics and extracurricular demands. I'm the parent of, of two, two high school boys playing multiple varsity sports. When their practices go beyond three hours a day, that also is a compromise to their ability to get the sleep they need, their homework done, and to be happy, well-adjusted individuals. So, that is an area that I think we have to work with as a community as well. I also want to talk about the fact that when we think about the after-school programs for middle school, we need to ask ourselves, why were those after-school middle schools created? Because the research showed that the adolescents at that, at that critical age, when they got out of school so early, they were at risk of engaging activity that was not going to be healthy for themselves nor our community. If they start late, then those, by the time those students get home, a good portion of them will now have the adult supervision that's important. They'll get home in time to be able to start their homework. So, I'm not saying that we don't value after-school programs, but I think we need to be very mindful of when we look at different hurdles, why is that a hurdle? And what was the, the purpose of those after-school programs in the first place? Because if we shift, then maybe that component isn't in the greater need than it was serving before. I'm watching my time carefully and trying to make sure, where am I, Mr. Velkoff? I think, sorry, Mr. McElveen.
You're at seven and a half.
I see, I've got about a minute and a half left.
Phased in.
So, in terms of the phased-in, with children in the system, only three of us on the board have them in the system, I'd love to see us be able to start this sooner rather than later, but I really appreciate the advice you've provided to us. I think we don't want to end up putting our, our families into a change and then to change back again. And so, I, I appreciate the advice and, and therefore, we'll listen to what my colleagues have to say about whether there's a compelling reason to, to still put forward the phased-in or not. And so, I guess, I wanted to make sure that as we stick to our 10 minutes, and I really appreciate the guidelines here, I do hope, though, in the end, that this has not suddenly been a rush for, for 12 school board members to throw out a bunch of words, and then we didn't actually end up coming together for what I hope will be some meaningful deliberation on how we go forward with this. But my final point that I will make with my last minute and 18 seconds that I see here is, to Mr. Plattenberg and to Dr. Garza, what I have been hearing is how supportive you have been in helping this board with its stated goal. And as a parent and as a board member, I really want to publicly thank you for that, because we, we really cannot move forward as a system in our attempt to find a solution without the, the support that each of you have tried to give through this process, and that has been very meaningful. And finally, for those out there in the athletic community, I was a high school athlete, my children are high school athletes, I'm committed to making sure that we preserve extracurriculars, but I do believe we can be successful.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Moon.
Mr. McElveen, if I don't use the full 10 minutes, do I have a go-back? Do I get a go-back? Okay, then I'll be succinct. Just address your questions. On the phased-in, I'm not, you know, I'm not in favor of, you know, doing any phased-in. I'll wait until September of 2015 to be able to implement it county-wide. As for the options, before I address the option question, I, I love and respect my brother colleague, Mr. Velkoff. There are many things you said in your remarks, as part of your remarks, that I agree with you, but at the same time, there are other points I vehemently disagree with you, and one of them being a putting out a no, no change as an option. I think as I, I try to make my point at the beginning of this work session by a refreshing our memory recollection that we, school board as a collective body, passed a resolution two years ago. It wasn't a unanimous, unanimous yes to that resolution at the time. However, once the board made a decision, I think we are obligated to honor that decision made by the board, when we set as a goal to have high school start time, not middle school, we didn't say middle school, we didn't say elementary school, we said high school start times to start after 8 o'clock. And that's what, that is what we are focusing on. And at this point, we are at a point where we are trying to find a good options, which I certainly, you know, certainly believe that will be defined after going through the old engagement process and further deliberation by the board. And ultimately, you know, board will make a decision, hopefully, hopefully, you know, sometime, sometime, you know, September or October timeframe. I think it's, I think, you know, suggestion could be October, you know, late October. But, you know, if we set our sight on working toward achieving the goal, no change should not be an option to be presented. And we, we, we proud to the public, various options, different options, some of them, you know, might be very, you know, might not be acceptable to you at this point in time or to even most of us, but see, the reason for putting out those options is to get exactly the feedback from the public so that we can come out, come back with a much better solution than what we have right now on our hand. Having said that, having said that, I would prefer to put out three options rather than four. I don't want to have too many options to confuse the public. And of course, I think, you know, even if, you know, we do not put out four options, that we are still hear the, you know, feedback from the, from the community that we need to hear back. I am very mindful of our budget situation, so I, I will not be in favor of putting out an option that costs $12 million at this point in time. So, I will, I will go with a middle school late, middle school, high school flip, and to see what the public will say to a high school, high school later, as the three options to put out and hear the feedback from the community. So, how much time do I have left?
Six and a half minutes.
Six and a half. I will come back to that later.
Okay, thank you, Moon. Next, we have Mrs. Reed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's efforts. We've been talking about this for years and years, and it's time for action. That being said, I want to start with the phased-in. That's the easy question. I vote no on that. This is important. It needs to be done properly, and everybody needs to be on board and be able to plan for it. Then, in terms of this question that's been put on the table about whether or not, I think we should nip that right in the bud. As my colleague, Mr. Moon, just said, this board already has made the agreement and has set in motion the desire to change these start times for high school students. We want to offer options, therefore, that attain the goal of later start times. Student health and safety is our priority and is non-negotiable. You can't reduce this to a price tag. We're talking about quality of life. We know adequate sleep impacts achievement. We must do this, not hide behind excuses. I believe there's a win-win here, but we must present feasible options. As I look at the options presented and trying to respond to the question on the table, so one, a criterion should be that high school should start as close to 8:00 a.m. as possible. But we also must not offend the community stakeholders that have worked with us in good faith, and we must offer options that minimize the impact on after-school activities and community use of fields. So, I believe another criterion should be to minimize the impact on the use of fields by our community and also the after-school activities that are sponsored by the county and the PTAs and PTSOs. The missing piece here, as I look at the information provided to date, is that we don't have a sense of how the extracurricular activities would impact the choices that are before us. So, I do believe that we'll need to get that information, and I'll ask Mr. Plattenberg in a minute if he can comment on that. So, for example, when we've talked to the athletic council, they've said, well, you know, if you have to push the schedule 15 minutes, you know, that's probably okay, but after an hour, that might begin to present challenges. Not that they're not surmountable, like perhaps you could come up with workarounds, but I'm just saying that we need to have those constraints put on the table, I think, before we go back to the public, so that people can make very informed decisions about how it will actually impact them. But I know that working on a sports schedule will take the same type of time and effort that it takes to look at the transportation schedules. We have to get this right, so I think it's better to be done thoughtfully than to do it quickly. But I do believe we can come up with win-win solutions for students, families, and stakeholders. So, for my sense, some of these, I just, in my heart, I say they're just too late. And I think I would go with, with three options. I would go with the middle, three out of the four that you've recommended, the middle, elementary school open window, the middle school early, elementary school 15 minutes earlier, and the middle school, high school flip. And another criterion for me is that if someone has to be impacted extensively, it would, I would guess that it should be the one where we're only talking about two years of school, which would be the middle school. So, that's another thought that I would have going forward. But thank you very much for all of your thoughtful work and for getting us to this point, and I hope the message is clear that we are on our way. And with my remaining moments, if I could ask Mr. Plattenberg to just comment on this issue that I've raised about after-school activities.
You raise very good issues, but to the point, the athletic council has been a part and of this stakeholder process from the get-go. The concerns that have been expressed from the athletic council, we have very integrated community use of our facilities. It's one of the, the benefits of being in Fairfax County. That participation has the parameters of concern. And the concerns in working with Bill Curran, the athletic directors at the individual high schools, for example, and with Amy Craig, with community use, talking to the athletic council, they keep saying that when you come back, we're willing to work with you. Thank you very much for bringing us along early in this process. We appreciate that, but we recognize, much like going out and getting the community feedback, that the articulation, "The devil will be in the details," is what they specifically quoted me. Now, we do have currently at the high school level, as mentioned previously, the leagues don't get use of the stadium fields due to the fall and spring sports. If there is a time that no, that no practice or games are not going on, then the school does free up the field, but that doesn't happen in the, as the currents often. And when it does, it's usually between the 9:00 and 9:30 to 11:00 range, which is pretty late. Definitely not in the spring with the multitude of the field sports that are going on, such as lacrosse, soccer, track and field, et cetera, so. But the groups that contribute to the turf do get practice time on the fields, and that's part of the agreement that I mentioned. It usually starts at 5:30 at all of our schools, so any change, and this was the same thing that the athletic council said, and also with Parks and Rec about the recreation use, we get our four hours. How you do that, as long as we get our time, we're good. So, part of that is, we understand the parameters, and we can articulate that in our engagement process to ensure that there is that communication. Some of the comments from my friend Mark Miana of the athletic council are, well, we want to make sure that we get true feedback and the school district is truly receptive to listening to the public engagement and the feedback that they receive. I have yet to being able to respond to that email that I got this morning, but I want to clearly articulate to Mr. Miana that this is a different day and that we truly are transparent. We truly are listening to the engagement. There are no preconceived ideas, and this process has been an evolution and will continue to be. But their parameters, as I said, are you give us the amount of time that we have, the use agreements with those that have participated in funding some of the second artificial turfs at our secondary schools, at our high schools, as long as they get their athletic time, and we try to be as consistent as possible. Those are the commitments that they want from us. I hope that helps.
Thank you. I'll yield the rest.
Thanks, Mrs. Reed. Just to be clear, you're, you recommend taking out those three options you mentioned, not four, right? Okay, thank you. So, you were no phased-in, options one, three, and four. Next, we have Ms. Evans.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank our, our experts from Children's for all the awesome work that, that you've done. I, I know how much work went into, to this and how much conversation and just the list of the, the people. of the, the people that you've had your conversations with over the last year is, is quite a long list. I want to thank folks from the transportation department, too, who, who work very, you know, many long hours, as well as the advocates who have been advocating for healthy start times for some time, and a number of whom are in the audience. So thank you for being here today as well. I want to reiterate what some of my colleagues have said. I think we have the opportunity to lead on this issue. And it's time we did say that we are going to lead on this issue, as we have in the past with the resolution that we passed two years ago. It's important that we leave this room realizing that we are committed to that goal and that we are moving forward with that. As far as it's important, as you all have stated today, that the conversation be about student health and student achievement. You know, too many times in the past, we've gotten kind of bogged down in making it look as though this were just a transportation issue. This is really a student health issue for, it, sometimes we say it goes without saying that, that people are in agreement about the science, but we continue to hear over and over again that people don't understand that students really do get more sleep when the start times change. And we've seen study after study that has shown that students really do get more sleep. They don't just stay up later at night. So it's important for us to keep our eye on that ball, keep our eye focused on the fact that this is a matter of student health and well-being, both for their physical and emotional and academic health. And as part of the public engagement, I think it's important for us to go out to the community and make that point, that this is the reason that we're heading in this direction. So those, I appreciate you stressing that, and I think with the community engagement, we need to be stressing that as well. As far as moving forward, we need to find the best approach. You've given us four. I think that the, the first one was one of the earlier ones that was later kind of refined. I'm, I'm not as, I, I would not think that some of those elementary school times, they seem outside of the comfort zone enough that, that the first one doesn't seem like one of the better options to me. I think that the, the second, third, and fourth one are valuable. And I, I also think that taking out one with high schools at, at the end, which I don't think will be the preferred choice, I think that there are a lot of downsides to that. But I don't know why we wouldn't have the conversation about it. So that would be my advocacy. At the same time, I wouldn't oppose taking five out. I have a different view than some other people do on that one. At the same time, but I, I am going to say, I think four would be the, the best approach for community engagement. Again, keeping in mind that at the end of the day, we very, very well may end up with a hybrid approach, once we get the community feedback, what works best for the, the different groups. I agree about the sports. I do believe that to get that right, we need, that needs to be an iterative process as well. We've seen just how much time and effort has gone into the transportation piece of this. And I think to get the sports piece right, we're going to need to go down and through that process and make that a very detailed look at just how we can work those pieces in there and get the most, the most use out of our fields and the most effective use of our fields, as well as community use, because all of those are very important pieces. On the cost, Mr. Plattenberg, you and I have had several conversations about cost, and I think it's important to emphasize that these costs estimates now are high, that they are considerably higher than some of them throughout the process and some costs were added. So would you like to talk about how the costs are going to come down?
Yeah, that, that is a fact, Ms. Evans. They are higher than our original estimates, but what they are is, they're taking a look at, and I use the term conservative budgeting, but, but someone clarified that, and they said, well, you know, you're really liberal on your budget.
Right, it's really inflated.
And the reality is, you know, to use the term really inflated, it's, it's, in, in my respect, it, it covers anything. So that there isn't, if we go ahead and go forth, the last thing that we would want is someone to come back, oh, it was bait and switch. So when we went ahead and vetted this through our friends in financial services, they pointed out some things about adding additional supervisors, training costs, and the like. They also budgeted it from the standpoint of new buses. Well, I retained, as I've stated to this, this body, that I've retained some of the more efficient buses that I was going to be turning back in the advance of knowing that there's this discussion as prudent management technique. Well, if those are leveraged into it, the bus costs come down. The, the maintenance costs may go up a little bit, but again, we're messing with the margins to use a phrase that was used before. So yeah, I, I do want to make that statement, that they, they are greater than they ever had been. And it was to make sure that we encompassed everything, that there was no stern unturned, and that we truly, we truly.
Yeah, that, good point. Worst-case scenario in terms of the, the cost. So I think that's important for the public to understand, too, that, that these costs really are worst-case and that they're likely to come significantly down.
Absolutely, as with the hybrid comment. Once we get community engagement, we'll be able to fine-tune everything. And again, this evolutionary process will continue to build so that we have all of these attributes that will be addressed, whether it's the athletic council, the use agreements, and as well as the cost.
And as far as the status quo, I, I do not want to see the status quo brought out as an option at all. I, I would strongly oppose that. We need to be having the conversation with the community about the best approach to accomplish this goal. So I, I would, would not want to see that added on here. As far as the, the phase in, I, I would love to see something happen this fall, if we could. I think that all the stars would have to align, and we would have to do more, have more conversation to see not just where it would work transportation-wise. We would need to make sure that we had a community where they were really fully on board with doing it this quickly. I will say, we have had in the past, we have had bell schedule changes, significant ones in May. You know, we just have. And we have expected people to adapt to them by September. Having said that, I see where the board is going with this. I, I don't think that that's going to be the, the popular approach. But if we knew that there were communities that could quickly adapt to this, I would support that. Short of that, though, I would not. So having said that, back to the, the next steps, I mean, one of the next steps, I think, is to, to work on some more specific sports schedules for us to be prepared for that piece of it. And also on the, the costs, would it, would it be a lengthy, would it take a long time for us to assess what it would cost to simply, to eliminate the false tier, for example? I mean, if, if that's, if that's a lengthy, I, I wouldn't ask for it if this, if this was a difficult, the false tier. The false tier is where more and more, we deliver our students at 6:45 in the morning to high school for a 7:20 start time. So that's, we, we deliver 35 minutes early increasingly, and so rather than 10 minutes before the bell. So I would like to see what the cost of that would be if it's not too cumbersome a process. But you're, you're, you are looking at me like perhaps that's a, a difficult thing to do, Mr. Plattenberg?
No, we'll be happy to do that. These are continuing evolutions, just as this request for another, another example of what one of those would be. Absolutely, that was done, Ms. Evans, for edification? The false tier is a part of the efficiency, if you will, which is, somebody could say it's just like conservative estimate, might be an oxymoron, for an efficiency of the routing process. But we could go ahead and, and take a look at what the impact would be. And I'll also give a timeline as to how much effort that will take.
Okay, all right. And I don't know if I have more time left, but I'm, I'm, I will save it for later, I suppose, then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans. You were at 9:35, so you're pretty good. So next, we have Ms. Smith, followed by Ms. Darnat-Kofax. Oh, and just to be clear, Ms. Evans was pro-phase in, in favor of options two, three, four, and high school late.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. I have a couple of questions first. On slide eight, it says, one of the, one of the bullet points was enforcement of public placement policies. I was just wondering what that means.
That, that's referring to grandfathering and out-of-boundary, that transportation accommodates out-of-boundary picking up kids, so they're on long runs.
So it would, it really references not doing grandfathering when you do a boundary study? Okay. And then on slide 16, when you reference the specific pairs of schools that you would need to do, some of us don't have the benefit of knowing what those would be, and I know other people do know, so I would like to know what the five specific pairs of middle schools and high schools are.
We specifically did not state them or share them with the stakeholders, not to cause a panic, because we wanted to get school board feedback on that. That'd be something that we'd be happy to provide you with.
So I have to start by saying, of course, I appreciate Mr. Velkoff's comments. One of my distressing facts, and as much as people think I'm just against changing start times, I'm not. I am pro-community. And this process has been a little fascinating to me that I think the community has been in the dark through this process, and, and a lot of the community has no idea what's happening. I know that we have some angry constituents out there that feel like they're not being listened to. You know, I, I was on the board in 2009, and I do think it was a fair and open process. And in that process, where the community provided input based on the specifics of what would happen to them, over 75% of the community said no. And so I look at this process where the board has made it a board goal, that I, I am concerned that we're talking about limited community input, that we don't want to give the community an option to say where their comfort zone truly is. And for me, it, it's about more than understanding that children need to sleep. There are so many quality of life issues out there for families, and I think that the board needs to listen to that and make a decision accordingly. And I don't see that in this process. And I think that if the board is going to decide that we'll only listen to certain things from the community, then we better be straight and honest with the community that we don't want your full feedback. And I think that needs to happen. I do not support a phased-in approach. I, I don't think that's acceptable. I do think it is more fair to the community to give them an option to say, no, we don't want to change, because that's truly listening to the community and what they have to say. And then, you know, the board will make whatever decision the board wants to make, obviously. I am concerned about budget. You talk about values and decision-making. If this was something that was easy to do, we would have done it. But I'm sorry, I go out and tell people, you know, it sounds like a lot of money, it's $2.5 billion, but it's still limited resources, and you have to have your values of what you're going to do with that money. And for me, right now, employee compensation is at the top of the list. So I cannot support bringing out a, a version that is going to cost us $12 million. I, I do think that's too much. And I do want to ask a question. It's an awkward place, because a, a couple of us on the board, were part of the committee, got to see more information. It's, it's not information we've all seen. So there's this perception that the dollar value that's come out now on some of these is higher than whatever the original dollar value is. So there's a perception, I think, in people's minds, is, oh, those are high numbers, we'll come down a lot. I don't have a good understanding of, you know, is $12 million really high, and you're going to do it for five? And I understand we want to cover ourselves, but this is a thing that, that trying to solve it just on, I believe it's going to be less, doesn't really work. So is, is there a way you can give me some idea of the differences of what people are thinking about how high the $12 million is? And I, and I understand your comments about we need to cover all those contingencies.
Yeah, Ms. Smith, I think Mr. Velkoff, his question to ask about what we're recurring, will, will allow us to provide as a response follow-up for the breakout of that? But the, the reality is that through any process, we are constantly looking at estimated costs. And so the, the comment about estimated costs versus what we actually fine-tuned before this presentation was that evolutionary process, so much that we included spares. Well, initially, early on in our process, we didn't include spares to the fleet, but that is part of our practice. It's part of our culture. So there are elements such as that driver training, recruitment bonus, I could go on and on overtime, that were, when we initially were looking at it, we looked at, what would the impact be on the number of drivers, number of buses? As we got further along in the process, much like the stakeholder and constituency feedback, it became, well, we need to consider this, we need to consider that. And so that's the evolution. But I think in response to Mr. Velkoff's question, I think we'll be able to provide a lot more detail.
So that would be able to show us the margin of error in the...
I don't know about the margin of error, the granular area.
Okay. So then, when I'm looking at the other options, and it, it is really hard to decide what's the best thing to take out to the community, I have a big problem with middle school late. I do not believe that the only purpose of a middle school after-school program is to keep kids, you know, off the streets. Because what I'm hearing from schools is the engagement, the enrichment, a time to, to help kids that are having instructional difficulties. And so I have a real problem to say middle school kids wouldn't get out until 4:20, because I do think we have developed something over the years of a strong middle school program that's valuable to kids' well-being, not just to keep them off the street. So, you know, I guess that I could say the, the two versions on slide 14 would be okay. I know that some of my colleagues are curious to see what the community would do with the 9:15 start time. I, I think it would be a non-starter, but I'm flexible over, you know, if the majority of people want to take out that version, I could accept that just to find out. Let me just check my notes a second. I think I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Smith. You were no phase in, supportive of bringing out the no-change option, options three and four, and late high school. So that's four total. Next, we have Ms. Darnat-Kofax, followed by Mr. Stork.
Thank you all for being here today, and thanks to my colleagues for all of your insightful comments. I always learn from you, and I think we are doing a good job about getting our points out as we discuss it. And also, thank you to the sleep advocates who are here as well. My social media distraction for the day began on my way here, when I checked my Facebook page, unfortunately. And one of my friends just wrote on there, I wish those sleep nuts would go away. Well, that, of course, made me realize that we are still a very long way away from making everyone understand the very compelling data and information that we have as to why we have chosen to make later start times a priority. And I think some people will choose to, to ignore the facts, whatever they are. And I think that's where we, as a board, have to make some very, become a leader and make strong decisions that are unpopular, because some people choose to ignore the facts. And I have to say that as a board member, I am committed to making this goal happen, but it is just one part of our overall student health and wellness. As a mother of a 15-year-old and a graduate, who just graduated last year, an extra hour of sleep is really only part of the overall strategy that we, as a board, have to take. And I do think, as Ms. McLaughlin said, and many of my colleagues have stated, we have to look at honoring our homework policies. And then we also have to talk about, as a board, a well-rounded student is also a happy and healthy student. So the extracurricular activities have to be considered, sports have to be considered, because that is all part of a well-rounded student. And we still have a lot, a lot of work ahead of us, even as we look at all of these options before us. Because I, again, I'll make a personal reference. Last evening, my daughter, a soccer player, got home at 9:00 AM, 9:00 PM, excuse me, after dinner and two and a half hours of homework, she went to bed around 12:20. That's a pretty typical night for my 15-year-old. Am I happy as a parent? I'm on the school board. You know, that's hard, but that's life, and that's the way it is. She chooses, I choose to let her, as a parent, play that sport. But I look at that scenario, and I am very interested in what you're saying, that 67% is very, very important to me, because that's a, that's a thing where people say, are they really going to go to bed earlier? Are they going to keep their, I mean, are they going to keep their bedtime the same? Are they just going to go to bed later, later and lose it all? So I think that point is very... So I think that point is very, very important to me as a mother, and as a school board member, as I go forward and make my decisions here. Because I don't want her going to bed at 1:15, you know, because everything's pushed back and then really having no benefit. And I think, as a board, I really, I'm glad, Mr. Plattenberg, you've talked about involving the athletic council and having them early on, because I think, as a board, we have to talk about the things that Ms. Strauss said. It's a real reality that some, if we don't, again, talk about policies or give certain directives, that there will be certain activities or athletic coaches that will then just flip the schedule on us and have our kids coming in at, you know, 6:30 for practice, right before school, to get an hour and a half in. And I think these are realities that I see as a parent in the system. I think we all know they're out there, and we have to talk about them and bring them out in the open. It's very, very important. So those are my comments. I don't have many questions, other than what my colleagues have asked. I am very, again, Mr. Plattenberg, want to hear on the middle school open window about that and, you know, where that $12 million cost is, because to me, that rings, rings the best choice for us. But again, we are in very tough budget times, and, you know, yesterday's decision from the Board of Supervisors, talking about our allotted budget amount, I knew that was going to impact where we're going in this scenario. But, you know, so I look forward to those numbers. Regarding my like or dislike for these concepts, I guess, to me, and I don't, I don't even have a question to ask you, I guess, but I am, when you talked about the 7:20 start time, and I guess it was important for us to have later start times for our teens. And teens are in middle school. And so I guess my question would be to you, why did you, at this point, have that middle school earlier start time, the 7:20? What made you put that out there?
Well, and that's actually been a debate within our own team. I think a few things to consider here is that false tier is real. People don't realize that, that 6:45, high school students, when we talk about 7:20 bell times, students are being dropped off at 6:45, pretty rarely. That, we have had the commitment that that will not happen with the middle school kids. Basically, you're looking at a 10-minute window of being dropped off. We also think that we can push that to 7:30 in the model. There'll be a little bit of an uptick in cost, but I think it's reasonable. Okay? So that 7:20 could become a 7:30. When you look at it from a realistic standpoint, those kids are going to school at 7:45, 7:55 now, so you're really pushing them down only 15 minutes. And even if the high school students start at 8 o'clock, because they're looking at 6:45 now, you're giving them, at a minimum, an hour and 15 minutes greater sleep opportunity. But we are very concerned, and that's why we put the middle school option there. We'd love to have everybody being able to have the best sleep opportunities possible. But in looking at the range, you move things 10 minutes here, 10 minutes here, I think Ms. Strauss put very perfectly. Those 10 minutes, 15 minutes this way, have real implications on the cost, as well as the logistical issues. We're talking about after-school programs. And that, I think that, for this board, this is where it really comes down, is you have to weigh, how important do you weigh the after-school programs and the extracurricular opportunities to the middle school and what you're going to impact those middle school kids going a little bit earlier? Because if you want the after-school programs, that would mean that you want the middle schools earlier. So that's why that middle school option was offered, because in all best worlds, biologically, that one hits almost the sweet spot of all three tiers.
And I'm at risk of stating the obvious here, but there is a certain kind of sweet spot, and we can't put everyone in the sweet spot, you know? So it's kind of a matter of the choices. And so that's why I believe the approach is correct in that, okay, so what does our community say about which of these approaches are, you know, most optimal? None of them will be perfect. If it were perfect, we would put everyone in the sweet spot, right, and have lots and lots of buses. You know, can't do that.
Okay. Two and a half minutes. All right. Regarding that, I do want to just speak to that, because I was on a county board, as many of you know, the Child Care Advisory Council, prior to me sitting on here for nine years. And both of my colleagues who spoke to the middle school programs are both right. The middle school programs did start as an intervention program, because Fairfax County kids in that age range between sixth and ninth grade, we had the greatest proportion of latchkey kids in the country before having middle school programs. And they were getting into some situations where they, yeah, you didn't know that. That was about 10, 12 years ago. And I sat on that committee and testified before the Board of Supervisors on that. So, but also, they have evolved into such enriching as we do here in Fairfax County. We are good at that. We are good at making these beautiful, these little things, big and beautiful and very important. So with those comments done, you want to know my answers to your questions. I do not, I would not like a phased-in approach. I spoke about that at an earlier board meeting, and I, and that is your guidance now, is to not have that phased-in approach. So in looking at all the options that are before us, and you, I was originally going to say I don't like any of the middle school earlier options, but in speaking to Dr. Garza's point about the sweet spot, and also speaking to your guidance as to having different types of scenarios for people out there, I would take one of the middle school earlier options, and I would use that one, that is the middle school, high school flip at this point. I would do the middle school, elementary school open window, which is the more expensive one that I hope that we could get down. The middle school late option, again, I don't think it is a perfect scenario, but let's throw out the high school later option, because, again, that really does speak truly to giving them that very much needed sleep in the range that is right. And, okay, but let me just say this, I may also support my colleagues, so I would have a fifth option, where, as Ms. Smith said, I do think, and based upon my Facebook post, I do think we would not be honest if we didn't have an option where it's not, it's not something that we want, so.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Darnat Kofax. No phase-in, options one, two, four, and high school late, so that's four. Next, we have Mr. Stork, followed by Ms. Heinz.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I, first off, wanted to thank, I think, the key folks who have gotten us here, and particularly, I want to thank Phyllis Payne and Sandy Evans and Sleep and all their efforts for so many years to push this issue forward in a way that we truly needed, we had to address it. And I know it's taken us a long time. We're not there yet, but we clearly are at the next step, and a step that I'm very pleased to be talking about today. So my colleagues have really, I think, provided the spectrum of views on that, and I'll add a few of my own, and then I have a couple of questions as well. But I thank you very much, Dr. Owen, and your group, for the work they've done. I think it's been very helpful in helping, if you will, kind of putting the options clear in front of us than we've ever had them before. This is truly a paradigm shift, and I just want to get into the new paradigm, because once we get there, I know things are going to shift again. But we have to get there, and I realize, for some folks, that's going to be tough. It does mean change. But change is an essential part of doing better, growing better, and most importantly, helping our children to be healthier, and frankly, I believe, more successful. So I think the Stakeholders Group was an excellent way of kind of testing and engaging and trying to feel what might work best, and so I thank them as well for their involvement in this process. Excuse me. I deeply support starting high schools later. I have for ever since I've been on the board, and I'm pleased that we can talk about this. I have, which options to get out in front of the public? I think we need to focus on, try to focus on three, if we can. I'm supportive of middle school late, the middle school, high school flip, and I do want the high school later. I do want to have people look at that and see what a more, if you will, ideal option would be for kids and how they sleep or don't, or how they don't sleep right now, I guess. I think the false tier is a great issue that we need to be talking a lot more about. It makes me mad, it makes me angry, when we talk about 7:20 start times. In reality, we're talking about, in essence, 6:45 start times for some kids, and that's truly unacceptable and one that I wish I understood better many years ago when we looked at this issue, clearly understand it now, and particularly anybody who lives in a more rural part of our county, and there are still a few of those, and the distances that they have to go. I think that people, you know, particularly in the southern part of the county, they have to get on the bus very early to get to their schools, and that's just wrong, when you have to get on the bus, you know, 6:15, 6:30, et cetera. I am not in favor of adding a no-change option. I think that discussion will happen organically regardless. I think the issue in front of us is the choices that this board needs to make, and that choice will always be available for the board to make. I don't think that changes whether there's input or not on it. But what we really want to know, what we're really trying to get to with this process, this community engagement process, is which ones of these are either the best choices or the least disadvantaged choices, i.e. people have fewer problems or have fewer concerns with it. So I need to know that by keeping people focused on, this change, in my eyes, is going to happen. For some individuals, it's maybe something they don't want to happen, but if, even if you don't want it to happen, give us your best shot. Give us what you think is the most appropriate, most effective way to move this forward. So I think with community engagement will clearly provide us with the other information that we need, but the dialogue will happen regardless. The last piece is really a disappointment for me, and I really don't know how or the other way to say this, but, Dr. Owen, when you were speaking earlier, I don't believe you really gave a balanced perspective of the phased-in approach. I know we talked about it a little bit before in the previous presentation, but today I only heard the reasons not to do it. I didn't hear really any of the reasons why it could be powerful, could be beneficial, could be really an optimal strategy, even though I'm committed to the ultimate initiation taking place in September of 2015. I think there's a lot to be learned by doing something sooner, particularly in those areas where we have opportunities that are no cost, and we have communities that are, in general, very supportive of doing this. I say that because, as an entrepreneur, I see the folly, and I do mean the word folly, that we all have at times about how we think things are going to look exactly like this or exactly like that. And when we get in there and we actually start using, we see, well, that's not really what I thought, and you need to tweak it. And as an entrepreneur, I tweak things constantly. I'm listening to my constituents, I'm listening to, in this case, customers, I'm listening to my own internal stakeholders, and I'm making changes, modifications. They aren't necessarily big paradigm-shifting changes, but they're tweaks, if you will, they're adjustments that help to make the final roll, if you will, the ongoing rollout of that more successful and more powerful longer term. So I really was incredibly, I really was disappointed that I didn't hear any of the positives of that, because I do see there being opportunity there. I realize that we don't know what the, I don't truly know the specific schools, the five ones that were identified. If there are any in my area, then I would welcome the opportunity to talk with them. I've talked individually with at least high school principals, and they're all very willing to be part of that process, because they recognize that it's coming. They see an opportunity. Whether or not for any one of them it fits, I don't know, but I really would like to have you at least address more formally with the group the positive reasons for doing this. I realize you all have had a lot of debate, and you probably have your, I know you have your recommendation on it, but I at least want to make sure that the board overall, I mean, the tsunami has already kind of crashed over the board, and I can't really take away, if you will, people's comments about not supporting a phase-in, but at least if they understand this better, then maybe it's something that we can rethink before this process is done over the next few weeks.
I mean, just to start the discussion, then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. You know, as people who are committed to healthcare, we want to help the most people, and I think this was raised at the last board meeting, we want to help the most people that we can and prevent accident injury, decrements in health. And we strongly believe that early start times cause those decrements in health. So the obvious and clear benefit is that you would be helping at least a group of people to be healthier.
And I certainly would echo your description of kind of modeling this and tweaking it and, you know, kind of figuring out some of the kinks and the bugs, certainly could be a benefit. I think there is a psychological, if you will, benefit to doing something at this point. This community has been struggling for so long with this issue, that I think there could be a perception that if we're postponing this to the 2015-16 school year, that somehow it won't happen. And putting a foothold, a place marker, if you will, by implementing a phased-in approach this coming fall could avoid that perception out in the community.
And I think it's important to know that, I mean, it pains us not to do this a year ago. I mean, we're people who have devoted our lives to this issue. And I think it's important to note, to bring clarity to this issue, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the National Institutes of Health, and the Institute of Medicine have all declared sleep deprivation in America to be a public health epidemic. We take that very seriously. And some of the scores on mood, sleep deprivation, Fairfax is not far into well, if you look at the national average. So to bring clarity to this situation, how does this school board, how does this district respond to an epidemic? If it was meningitis, if it was tuberculosis, if it was another public health issue, how would this board respond? So we believe that to do nothing is to do harm to our children. So starting there, okay?
Good.
We would have loved to propose a phased-in approach, but listen to all the stakeholder feedback, to all the meetings that we've engaged, we just didn't think that, we think that the risks outweigh the benefits of going with that approach at this point. So we believe, and the goal that was given to us, is our charge, was to make this happen. It wasn't to weigh whether it should be done, it was to make it happen, right? And we've told each stakeholder that. We believe that the best way forward is to go forward with full implementation next year. We believe that you'll have the staff behind you, which is critically important. We believe that we can help bring the rest of the community along, and we've already had an invitation from Steve McLaughlin at the Athletic Council to come and brief them in the next couple of weeks, and we'll be pleased to do so. We believe if we go through a slow and deliberative approach, that that will have the best opportunity for success.
Mr. Stork, you're at your time, so if you could let us know your advocacy on the phase-in.
That truly was my last point.
Okay. So you're pro-phase-in still?
I'm pro-phase-in, yes.
Okay. So, and just to clarify, you supported three options. One would be the high school late, one would be option number two, middle school late, correct? And number, and your third would be the number four, middle school, high school flip?
I want to just make sure, middle school late, middle school, high school flip, and the high school later?
Yes.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Heinz, followed by Ms. Schultz.
All right. Thank you all very much. I think Mr. Plattenberg said it best when he used the word "evolution," because that's kind of what we've been through. It feels like it's been slow and kind of painful for a long time. As I've mentioned before, my daughter, who graduated from college a year ago, was in middle school, first time I went to a public meeting about this. So I don't feel like, I don't feel like there's anybody in the community who wanted to be engaged up till now, somehow in the conversation, who hasn't had a chance to do that. So as far as putting status quo out as an option, I don't support that. It's not, just for the reasons that Darrell, you just mentioned, that's not the healthy thing to do. It's a decision we've already made for the benefit of our students, and it's not, even if the community, if, it's not a vote that I would take. I would not vote to support the status quo. So I don't know why we would put it out to the community. I think it would send the message that that's something we would seriously consider, and it's not something... seriously consider, and it's not something I would consider. So I would not put no change out there. I do just want to say, and I thank my colleague Sandy Evans very much for her years of advocacy on this, and for the time that she's taken this past several months with the Stakeholders Committee and with me, helping me understand everything and the history of it, and very much with our consultants here, and Mr. Plattenberg, and all the folks who came to the stakeholders' meetings. I mean, that, those were very meaningful and deep conversations, and a lot of good information came out of them. It's obviously what we had to do to move forward. After 12 years of just chatting, I think we're finally moving forward. So my thoughts on, I know Mr. McAlvein wants my vote, so I would support the middle school late. Of course, my computer decides. No, well, I'm going one at a time. One second. Thank you. I would support middle school late, middle school early, the flip, and high school late. So I guess the only one I'm leaving out of the recommended ones is what I call the $12 million option, even though I think it has some benefits. I think the cost is an issue. And I also, as Ms. Evans said, I think that window for elementary schools is just really not something that I am sure I could personally support. But I think that our goal here is to give the community feasible scenarios that meet our objectives, right? Not that we necessarily send out scenarios that I would support, you know, each one of them. And so I wanted to talk a little bit to the high school late, because I know it's not something that you all decided that you wanted to support. And thank you for giving me your time last week to talk about that. The reasons that I support it as something that I think I want the community to look at, talk about, and report back to us on are, you know, I think it meets our objectives. It's low cost, check, right? It responds to the science, probably the best of all of them, because we have all of our teenagers getting a significant increase in sleep, so check. Is it being done in neighboring systems? Check, right? It's done next door in Loudoun County. Now, I understand there are differences between us and Loudoun County, and that would definitely be part of the conversation in our community outreach and in community engagement. We would hear from the Athletic Council and the Parks people, because that option would affect them the most, I think. So we would definitely have that as a big part of the community conversation about that. But it is done next door. And I think that's something I hear from people. You know, I live in the western part of the county, and I hear it from people. I work in Loudoun County. And so they say, well, you know, why can't, why can't we do it? I think there are good reasons why probably we won't want to do it eventually. But I want to put out to the community the opportunity to weigh all those, all those criteria and all those values. Is it significantly different from the other options? Yes, it is. It would be the only one that really puts high school late. And I worry a little bit about putting options out there. You know, you put three or four options out there, and they all look kind of the same. The message to the community may be, well, we don't really want your input because we've already decided, you know, and so we're just, we're just letting you talk about the margins, you know? So I think there's an optics thing there, where we really put something out that's significantly different. So, but I did want to give you a chance to talk about why you did not have it as one of the, your recommended options, because I think everybody should hear that. So if you wouldn't mind, thanks.
Yeah, I think, I think what we wanted to do is, we thought it was our charge to kind of be objective arbitrarers of fact, right? And believe me, we've had debates amongst us, because we really weigh those things about, you know, what's biological cost, and then the political logistical. And we all, and everybody has to have, they all weigh those things a little bit differently, right? So we have no problem going forward with this. But I think, based on all the stakeholder engagement that we've had, especially from the Athletic Council, the Parks Authority, that we had to bring to you what we've, what reflected we thought was the most feasible, from having the least amount of impact, and trying to weigh those different considerations. But going forward, once we have the board input, we're completely on board in going out and selling those options and showing the pros and the cons of each one. Because there is no one magic bullet. There is no one perfect plan yet. Hopefully, we'll get close, you know, to that. But I think you have to go through this, everybody, we've seen it. Everybody has to go through this kind of discovery moment, where they go, oh, I didn't consider that. And then the kind of, it's an evolution, the kind of, where each person comes. And what we'll see going forward is a community, hopefully, going through that, and then coming together with some type of input on what's the best approach.
And I would just, would just want to add to that, was, one of our concerns was, you know, if that was put out as one of, one or two options, that it would essentially kill it. Because the Athletic Council and Parks and Recreation, and the voices for community use of athletic fields, et cetera, would be so strong. And we've seen this happen before, unfortunately. You know, we're totally in agreement with you that by, from a biological perspective, that is absolutely the best option. And we're, and as Darrell said, we're willing to sell that a hun, you know, 100%. But it was that concern that there's going to be voices that are very loud that would object to that.
Well, thank you. And I do expect that. You know, I expect that to be a robust conversation, right, when we get out there. But I think we have to be careful to go ahead and give the options out there to people. And, you know, we can't let one value set kind of hold a gun to our head on this, right? So I want to give the public a chance to weigh all of that. So I appreciate your being willing to head out on that anyway, even though you know that it's, you're maybe, maybe in some headwinds on it. So I hope I'm not running out of time. I, unfortunately, it surprises me and distresses me that when I first realized we were not going to be able to do this all next fall, I was like, oh, really? But I understand why. This is huge. And we have a lot of conversations going on about the master schedule and all that for the next year. There's, you know, so there are very good reasons to go ahead and go a little bit slowly and strategically at this point. So I was hopeful that we'd be able to do something by next fall, right, for some kind of a phase in. But as we talked about it, it just became clear that there were so many practical issues with it, and potentially political issues with it, where you'll have pushback from, you know, a handful of people. But it will be, at the time that we're making a decision about, about this, you know, about FY 2015, the full rollout, we'll be maybe hearing from people in the community who are still dealing with the change of a partial rollout, and they'll be upset with it. And that may make us feel like, oh, wait a minute, maybe we can't do this at all. And so I worry about the political conversation if we do that at that point in our decision-making. One minute? Thank you. All right. The only thing, possibly a next step, I don't know if it is, and Ms. Evans alluded to it, the messages of the stakeholders at the community meetings. I think it's important that we continue to have a conversation between now and the community meetings, so that when we get to the community meetings, everybody knows what the messages of the stakeholders will be. We don't want any surprises there. We don't want, you know, one group to come in and say, no, you know, here's why we don't like this option. And, you know, as long as we know going ahead what people will say, that will help. So I'm not sure how to set that up, except for maybe continued conversations with stakeholders between now and then. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mrs. Heinz. Exactly at 10 minutes. We are now down to Ms. Schultz.
Well, I'm sorry I missed your presentation, but in some ways, I think maybe less information is more, because the takeaway was, was the report and all the time that we've spent together. And, you know, I want to make the point that I am the only school board member who truly has skin in the game on this. I'm the only school board member that has a high school student, a middle school student, and an elementary school student, a kindergartner. I'm a mother of a 19-year-old, a 16-year-old, a 13-year-old, and a six-year-old. So I cover, you know, the K through 12 spectrum and the teenage spectrum. And coming off of spring break, I have a very recent experience with the different biological needs of students at different ages. And my high schooler was not waking up at 5:50 in the morning, and was not getting on a bus at 6:30 in the morning. And my middle schooler was in the same position. And the degree of pleasantness that I experienced with my 16- and 13-year-old was, you know, heretofore unforeseen, you know, since the last break. And having those well-rested teenagers is the essence of this discussion. I'm bothered by the fact that there is even a discussion, in the face of the knowledge that this is a health epidemic at a national level, as qualified by NIH and CDC and so on, where we have entire organizations of physicians, psychologists, and clinical specialists who know much greater than do we, that tell us that this is the right thing to do, that there is even a notion that we would continue the status quo. We have been in a position to receive a profound amount of information that says that this is better for student health, for student wellness, and thus for student achievement. And to hear that there are myths being perpetuated that there will be no participation in extracurricular activities is to decry the face of the facts that have been given to us. If there were school districts where they instilled a later start time, and there were no participation in extracurricular activities, I don't think that any of those school districts would have kept a later start time. So the notion that students will not participate, or that participation goes down, has already been demythologized for us. So I think that we need to go with the information that's been given to us. And with respect to the thoughtfully but quickly, but not quickly, comment that both Ms. Reed and Mr. Stork kind of argued different sides of the argument. And I appreciate Mr. Stork bringing up the inquiry about the lack of arguments for a phase in, is, at the end of the day, there are pros and cons to a phase in. But I, but I do believe that there are a lot of pros. And I think that if we have willing and able school pyramids that could lead the way and be early adopters, and there are always early adopters when there's change, you know, it's not the strongest of the species, you know, that survived, nor the most intelligent, but those most responsive to change. And we cannot deny that fact. So to deny the fact that change is coming, you know, is to embrace, you know, a decaying, you know, situation. And so I do think that we need to consider, as one of the options, a phase in, and that there could be refinements. We just went through, you know, a pilot program with regard to introducing better and more healthy food in our schools with Marshall. We didn't attempt to roll it all out at one point, but we acknowledged that there was work to be done, and that we had to institute and start change and learn a few things from it as we refined a final rollout. And we're working on that at this point. We didn't say no to a pilot because, well, if you can't do it all, then do nothing. And I think that is a poor, I mean, I understand politically, you know, in the community, it may seem like, well, if you don't do it all, then it'll be too hard. Well, this is hard. Change is hard. And I think that once we accept that the, that we own the mantle of change as the leaders and the elected officials on this, that that is the way forward. So I definitely do support a phased-in approach. I think we find, and I don't, I'm not privy to where those schools are or what the lists are, but that we find five willing areas and have them help us navigate that through. I do have a question with regard to the model flip and how that affects secondary schools. Because as I said, you know, I'm also the only parent on this board that has students in a secondary school. So how do you propose the middle school and high school change times vis-à-vis our secondary schools? Was that a part of the consideration? Maybe this is a question to Mr. Plattenberg. Maybe it's a hybrid.
We've looked at, yes, we did, in fact. We looked at the segmentation of some of the middle schools. And for example, you've got Frost Woodson, you've got other schools such that, that are real close to each other, in addition to Robinson, in addition to Hayfield. We did look at the secondary schools. In fact, and the reason why we have over 19 different iterations is because we did look at a number of different distinctions and a number of different aspects of them.
But with all respect, Frost and Woodson don't start school at the same time. Or they do?
Yeah.
But they're, but they're picked up on separate buses?
But to your point, it's not.
Okay. All right. Well, so, so we have Frost Woodson, Robinson, Lake Braddock, Hayfield. So we have these schools that don't quite fit this. So that leads to my second advocacy, that we take more choices rather than fewer out to the community. Because while I don't believe that new choices should be created by the community, I do believe, as we discussed in the Public Engagement Committee just prior to this, that we could likely wind up with a hybrid. And that it is incumbent upon us to seek the greatest degree of input on the greatest number of choices, not limit choices that go out to the public from the outset. Because limiting the choices now, limiting the options now, limits that on which we receive feedback. So I think it is important for us to go out with more choices, because I don't think even the choices that are before us in this report encompass the secondary options, because you have middle schools and high schools that start at the exact same time. And we have middle schoolers going to school at the same time as high schoolers right now. So we don't really see that option, and I think we're going to wind up with hybrids. So I do think that there are some other components, like my colleague Ms. McLaughlin brought up, digital citizenship, you know, and the question of educating the public about, you know, cell phones in rooms overnight, and the blue light, and how that causes loss of sleep. Those are, those are peripheral to, to the underpinnings of this. And we definitely do need an education campaign around that. But, you know, the no participation in extracurricular activities, we need to take that off the table. I think we need more options than, than fewer. And I think we need to support a phased-in approach. The situation is that other school districts have been able to do this and do this successfully. It is not going to be easy. And the sooner we begin this, rather than delaying it to an election year, the better off we are in keeping our word that we've understood that this is a health crisis, and that we are charged with supporting the health and academic success of our children.
Ms. Schultz, so you support more options. Does that mean five options?
At least.
Okay. And can you tell us which options you support?
So the phased, the phased-in approach, obviously.
Right.
The 40-minute slide.
Okay. High school late.
The middle school, high school flip, but I think it's going to probably be an iteration of that, because I don't believe in starting middle schools at 7:20. So I would say a hybrid of that. And the open window. I do not, under any circumstances, support the late. And I think the fact that the people that are least supportive of this are supporting that in general, when I think it's a nonstarter with the community, while it, it has its notion that it definitely does give them more time, I think we all know it's a nonstarter. And to take something that we know is a nonstarter to the community is disingenuous.
Okay. So we have three from you. High school late, numbers one and number four. Do you want to advocate for any others right now?
No.
Two and three.
Right. Not, not, not high school late.
Okay. You don't want high school late?
I do not want high school late.
Okay.
I'll go first.
I'll go first. So, I have a quick go-back for Ms. McGlocklin and then Mr. Moon.
With my limited time remaining, I just, in listening to the conversation, I felt this needing to be stated. As elected officials, we have a profound responsibility to promote the facts of this decision and to dispel any accurate myths. I've heard this before, and I pray to God we move forward on correcting the facts here. This board is not caving to vocal community groups. This board is embracing extensive brain research. We are responding to the fact that we do have a national epidemic of sleep deprivation, and it is especially affecting our children. And we have an obligation, as stewards of this public school system, to optimize student learning, to protect and promote student health and well-being. So, I hope that as we go forward, when we hear anyone in the public, and we will be getting emails saying, "Why are you still caving to a vocal minority on this one?" This is not about caving to anyone. This is about best practices. And I really hope my colleagues will understand the importance of promoting that. And the one other comment I wanted to make sure people understood from my earlier remarks, I was only speaking to the after-school, middle school programs that Fairfax County sponsors, Ms. Durnette-Cofax referenced it, and I appreciated that she heard me correctly, but I don't want people to think I was speaking to our community extracurricular activities and things. It's just the purpose and the role of the FCPS after-school, middle school programs.
Mr. Moon?
I just want to use a part of my six and a half minutes still left, is, you know, going back to the options I put out as my choices, which are two, four, and basically number six, which is high school later. When you look at those, it's not that, you know, I am actually voting for any one of those three options at this point in time. I just want to hear feedback from the community on those various different options. When you look at those three, you know, elementary school seems to be, in my mind, reasonable. I was looking at high school and middle school, what different, you know, choices, you know, community will see. High school, you have eight, for the high school, under-middle school late, you have a high school, 8:30. On the flip, you have a high school basically 8 o'clock, and then high school later, you have basically 9 o'clock. So, you have 8, 8:30, and 9 o'clock. And on the middle school side, you have 9:30, 7:30, and you basically have 8:30, 7:30, 8:30, 9:30. So, you have all these different options put out to public, so to hear the feedback from them. I think that's the, you know, purpose behind all this exercise.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moon, for clarifying that. So, at this point, I want to tell you where we are in terms of, well, I'll first tell you where I am. I have to tell you, when we first took this resolution, we heard from the superintendent that it would cost $50 to $70 million to implement any sort of change. So, I would argue that Mr. Plattenberg has already saved us $40 to $60 million, with whichever solution we determine. But, right, right, not this superintendent, to be clear.
We are not giving him any commission, though.
But, so, you know, I am very optimistic. I think with the majority of this board that we will come to resolution. I do not support the phase-in. Seeing where we are on the votes, I'm going to go along with the majority of the board and support options two, three, four, and high school late. I do think, I agree with Mr. Moon, that those give us the most unique options to take out to the public. So, with that, let me tell you where we are. So, in terms of phase-in, we are, let's see, eight against phase-in and three in favor, no, I'm sorry, nine against phase-in, three in favor of phase-in. So, that's where we are on that one. In terms of how many options we take out to the community, let's see, we are at, is that correct? Yeah, sorry. Okay, so we're at five in favor of four options, which is where we started, four in favor of three options, and three in favor of five options. So, it looks like four options is the winner there. And then in terms of the options we take out to the community, the option with the most votes was option number four, which, to be clear, is the middle school-high school flip. Then we are tied with the next, no, I'm sorry, we are tied between options number two and high school late. So, number two, to be clear, is middle school late, and then, so, high school late, which was not recommended to us. And then finally, option number three has the next number of votes, which is middle school early, elementary school 15 minutes later.
Earlier.
Or earlier, sorry. So, that leaves us going to the community with four options, including option two, three, four, and plus high school late, and no phase-in. So, we now have, would you like to give any reactions to that?
Sorry, Ms. McLaughlin, I have a question. You said that there was a tie between?
Options two and high school late.
Two and high school late, so are you talking about taking them both?
Yes.
So?
So, we're taking the top four options. The board was in favor of four.
Okay.
I'd just like to make a comment about the no-change option. We recently reviewed the Youth Risk Behavior Survey results from 2010, 11, and 12, and one of the striking things about our analysis was that 56% of 12th graders are getting six or less hours of sleep per night, and only 3% of 12th graders are getting adequate sleep. Now, if you looked at that from the standpoint of how many kids in Fairfax County are going hungry, and you found that 56% of students in 12th grade were going hungry every day, and only 3% were getting an adequate amount of food, nutritional, nutrition, I think there would be no question as to what your next step would be. The second point I would like to make is, there was just a study published less than a month ago, which reviewed the results of some 9,000 students in eight school districts across three states. And one of the things that stood out about that study was that in several of the communities that had delayed their high school start times, there was a 60% to 70% reduction in car accidents in adolescents between the ages of 16 and 18. A 60% to 70% reduction. It's hard to imagine another operational change that could have that profound an effect on the health and safety of students. And just to reiterate what Darrell said, to do nothing is to do harm. The status quo is unequivocally detrimental to students on multiple different levels. So, I would really urge you to take that option off the table.
Ma'am.
And just to be clear, it's not on the table. There were only three votes in favor of that. Yes?
Oh, go ahead, please.
No, 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 go ahead.
No, I just, for Dan and Elizabeth's sake, I wanted to give you a little bit more information about the phased-in approach. I think it's, the five options that we looked at that we thought were doable, it was only with five specific pairs, and with information that we had through the principal survey and other stakeholder engagement, we believe that only two of those pairs were in support of districts or had some leadership support. We don't know about the actual student-community support, okay? So, that definitely weighed into our factors in bringing that forward, and we were very careful about, you know, we, A, we promised people anonymity when they did those surveys, but even in our discussions, we kept that within us, and we didn't even share that information with transportation, who ran those scenarios. So, that was a large factor in talking about that. We also believed, and we know it's off the table, but I just wanted to explain a little bit more about our thinking behind that recommendation.
First, Dr. Garza, and then Ms. Schultz.
Thank you very much. You know, I know that, you know, listening to yours and other community meetings I've had out there, I've had a lot of people ask me about this issue. And I even have had people ask me, "So, where do you stand, Superintendent?" So, while this is a meeting of the board, I think it is important, I guess, for the community to understand where I stand on this issue. And so, I won't take a lot of time. I won't need 10 minutes, I promise you that. But I do support the direction that we are going. I think there's a growing amount of research and literature about this issue, and I'm compelled, after reading and understanding that literature. Furthermore, I've seen with my own children, the differences, it's, I think, pronounced when you have an elementary child versus a high school student. I think it's pronounced, even if you don't understand the research literature or know or have read it. I think it's interesting. I also recall, many years ago, I've been in this business almost 30 years, many years ago, before we even had the sophisticated research we have now, I remember high school principals, we would talk about, "Hey, on your schedule," even schools in Texas, by the way, that wouldn't, didn't start high school until like 8:30, 8:20, "Hey, don't put your hardest subjects first on your schedule, because your high school students, do not put Algebra I or Chemistry or Physics first, period." This was years ago, we would talk about that. So, I think, from a practical perspective, I think a lot of educators just knew it, that it was more appropriate for some of those harder subjects to be later in the day. I know the easiest thing in the world for us to do is nothing, and that applies to a lot of things that we do. Not everyone will be happy with a change. I know that, too, because we can't make everyone happy on a lot of these very important decisions that we make. But I do think it's very important that we do it right. And a delay at the start of any change that we make in September of 15 is not a delay. It's about doing it right, having meaningful community engagement. And then, if we follow this timeline, almost a calendar year for our families, our communities, our community groups that have been meaningfully engaged at this point, and others to make the appropriate adjustment. I would hate for us to change it and expect everybody else to change also that quickly. So, ultimately, at the end of the day, I serve with the will of this board, but if anyone was out there wondering whether or not I was reticent on this, I am in full support of the direction that we're ahead.
Ms. Schultz, here a quick go-back.
I just had a response to the comments about the phased-in approach, and the fact that there didn't necessarily appear to be kind of a universal buy-in across, you know, that potential pilot or phase-in. And I'm so grateful that I spoke after Dr. Garza, because that is exactly what I was going to say, is that at this point, we need to make it clear that the principals not buying into this is no longer an option, that is incumbent upon us, whether it is to educate, inform, collaborate, to the extent necessary for them to understand why they want to buy in. It's not that this is a top-down, but it is the essence of what we're trying to do. So, I mean, I'm saddened by the fact that there didn't appear to be, you know, potentially the leadership, even in five pairings, because I think that we have the capability in the principals for the leadership on this. And I'd like to see them leaping to the opportunity to be the early adopters for the benefit of our students.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. Strauss is going to close us out.
Just very quickly, again, thank you. The fourth time I've done this. I think, first, two things. What we have learned in our attempts prior, that have been very difficult, we cannot make perfect bell schedules for everybody, because the cost is prohibitive. If we opened everybody at 8:30, which is everybody's dream, we can't. That's where the millions of dollars. But I think the community has learned that as well, so that it is, what are we all willing to do in order to make this in a much more positive direction? So, I needed to defend all the other times we tried this. I also think the last time we tried this and went to the community with straw men that were, that it was not acceptable, but we've learned from that. And your reflection, you have figured that out. And again, I'm very grateful. If we hadn't had the recession, I think we would have been able to push something through. We would have been able to go back, try it again, because we learned important stuff. When you have a recession and the bottom just falls out of your funding, everything just grinds to a halt. So, again, I think we can succeed this time. We have learned enough, enough great research, and listening to my colleagues, I think if we are thoughtful and strategic, I think this time we will win. Thank you.
Thank you, and hopes to get us out in time, in two minutes. We have the next steps up on the board. So, Mr. Velkoff had about three-fifths of these, so it's a shame he's out of the room right now. But I know he had them written on a sheet of paper, so we can make sure that these jive with that. Is everyone else's up there?
I guess I have a question for Mr. Plattenberg or Dr. Garza. If, as we go out with these estimates, and we said we knew that, you know, they might be very liberal at this point, one issue of cost in one of the proposals we're putting out there is a late middle school start, which means we would end at 4:20. So, would it be relevant information for the estimate and/or for the public and the board to know what is the current cost of our middle school after-school program? Is that a cost that FCPS bears? Is it the cost that the county board supervisors gives us funding for?
80% of it comes from the county, but the point about the costs, again, we will continue, a hybrid will continue to change this. It is very fluid. It has been an evolution for us to fine-tune, as I said, the overtime and stuff. We didn't include that previously. I mean, we didn't include the 15% spare. So, it will continue to change. I don't have what that 80% cost is right now, in terms of retrospect, but the comments that I believe were made about the amount of time that's currently being filled up in one of these scenarios that fills up that time, and what that impact would be on that program. I mean, the program came about because of the void of the time being occupied, you know, so.
Yeah, I just think that is something that if we're looking at this and trying to help the public understand costs and savings, would that be relevant? Because if it, I don't know how much the program costs, but it would be a savings to the board supervisors' funding and/or the school system funding.
Ms. Kovacs?
It would not be my intent, or I hope it would not be the board's intent, that these programs would go away. 4:20, people, and we work in Washington, Ms. McGlocklin, people don't come home till 7 o'clock sometimes, so that was just a buffer zone. I wouldn't think that that would be an option we would want to talk about. If you're doing late, there's no reason you can't have middle school programs late. I realize some people may choose not to utilize them anymore, because they'll have their own community-based programs or their own club sports teams, but I don't think that that should be factored into the cost at all.
Okay, thanks. And then, Ms. Hines had a question about one of the next steps.
Yeah, on that one, I would just say maybe you could ask it as a budget question, just to get, you know, figure out what the total cost to us of middle school programs are, just so we have the information. Couldn't hurt.
Absolutely. I was just offering it up there. I don't, I'm not wed to it being tied in.
Makes sense. My, the second-to-last bullet there, the list of the five specific pairs of schools included in the presentation, I didn't have that on my list of next steps, and I'm not sure the list, okay, so would you explain why you want the list of five, because there's a reason why we didn't put that out?
I totally agree.
At this point, we aren't phasing in either, so.
Right. Can we take that off the next steps list?
Right, because I don't think you, I'd still like to know, but you don't want to make it public information to us, obviously.
Yeah, I think we'd have an unnecessarily fraught conversation in the community, right? Okay, so can we take that off? Thank you.
Okay, we good? Ms. Evans?
On the sports schedules, I think it, the issue here is developing sports schedules using an iterative process. It's not just more information, so that's the way I would put that.
Is that captured in the last bullet, maybe?
I don't, I don't think so. I think we need to be working on, just saying, you know, develop sports schedules I think we need to be working on, just saying, you know, develop sports schedules using an iterative process, if that is in agreement, you know. I think we need to be doing the same thing we did with Transportation to be developing it.
Could that be part of our ongoing conversations in the last bullet? So an update on continuing conversations, so that there are no surprises. And within that, no surprises would be an iterative conversation about sports schedules and...
Well, if it's clear we're talking about our own people, you know, we're talking...
Including the Athletic Council. I mean, we can put that in there.
Well, but not just Athletic Council, but, you know, Bill Curran.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Primarily his shop.
Thanks, Ms. Evans. You okay? Ms. Reed?
Just a clarification on that same bullet, number four. I was talking about not only sports schedules, but other after-school activities. So just, I would just make that explicit. Yes, if you would. Thank you.
Okay. Looks like we're good to go. Congratulations, everyone. Big step.
Okay. So we'll return at 2 o'clock?
Yes, we will return at 2 o'clock for a CIP discussion.
You like it? Yeah. Did you have a question? In fact, I caught my...
Find your back to your head. You know, what he does for women.
Absolutely. You don't eat it.
Hey. Everybody can stand a little bit.
Oh, thank you. They do.
Well, not there yet, but, you know.
Oh, I know.
It's very...
Well, I think...
I like that.
I like you.
I started from what you mean.
No, I know, but he was...
This was...
No, but I learned that...
Thank you.
You can like share if you want to.
Practice, don't worry.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm like them.
I'm solid on my three.
This is not history.
I also like...
I actually have...
I should have.
And I would go for one.
Yeah.
That's fine.
We can have some of these.
I would say...
I think when they want, they want to lay it right.
Yeah.